Okay, we have Reverend Tarver is gonna say our prayer for tonight. Is she in the audience?
Reverend who?
Pastor. Oh, you put Reverend on here. Pastor Tarver?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. You put Reverend on. I'm sorry. Okay, Reverend. Yeah, come to the podium.
Let us pray. Most gracious and kind heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you this evening just thanking you for grace and mercy. Lord, we thank you for an opportunity to come together and be about your business in the city of Inster. May you bless the staff and everyone that is here, Lord, that your will will be done. We thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Can we all stand for Pledge of Allegiance? Our pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
United States of America. One nation under God, in the government with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call now, please.
Mayor Wimberly, your present. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Watley.
Present.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
And Mayor Potem, presiding.
All right, thank you. Full agenda with one added under presentation, the item C, Latoya Triplet from DPS. So what's your pleasure?
Latoya who?
Toya, Latoya.
Oh, Joyce.
Well. Okay, so what's your pleasure?
So move.
Any support?
What?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, ayes have it. Okay, we do have three presentations. We have one from Nerds Express, the other one from USI, and also from Ms. Triplet from DPS. So, Justin, you can come up. Justin, come up and give your presentation.
Did, uh, Tarver? While he's getting ready, I'll just introduce myself real quick. My name is Tony Robertson. I'm recently hired full-time with Nerds as the VP of Sales and Operations. Before I go over the agenda before we start, I'm sorry, what? I'm gonna repeat your name.
I thought it was Justin.
For our chair.
Or Tony.
Okay, Tony Robertson.
Okay. I thought you was Justin. I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm here. And so, I'd be remiss if I did not mention my times with Inster before I start. Back in nineteen...
Excuse me, sir, can you talk in front of the mic so everyone can hear you?
Okay. All right. So, in the early, I'd say late seventies, early eighties, my mother used to work for Logan's Party Store. Anybody remember Logan's on Middle Belt in Harrison? She worked there, and also she worked at Mayshack Shop on Notre Dame Street. So, the significance of that story is when my mother used to have to do the receipts, she used to take it to the Mr. Logan's house on 26116 Ross Street. And the reason I know that address is because I bought the house there. And so, I reside, I was a resident of Inster for a number of years. My kids grew up in Inster. So even though I'm presenting to you today as a vendor, but I'm also an ex-citizen in the home. So this is not just a business pitch, but it is personal in terms of us and the work that we do here at the city of Inster. So here's my agenda. So first thing I want to talk about is who's Nerds? Who supports you from an IT perspective? Who's your IT team? What have we accomplished? What's our next steps? And the most important question is why should you keep us? Because we are up for contract. Any questions on the agenda? Okay, so Nerds was established in 2011, purchased by Dustin Barlow. I've known Dustin probably since 2010, 2011 is kind of when I first met Dustin. Was headquartered out of Detroit. We're registered as a minority company, and we also cover city of, uh, city Detroit. We cover a lot of the universities and small businesses. The significance of that is that regardless of what industry that we're in, we're always gonna bring best practices here to the city of Inster. I also worked 15 years with IBM, so I have over 25 years of experience when it comes to public sector and city local government. So here's the team. You probably can't see that, you see Dustin Barlow's name up front. The, um, this is the investment that Dustin has put into Nerds Express. You see Dean, Asa, Darius, Ed. You guys probably have met them all, but when Dustin first took over this contract a little bit over a year ago, it was just him and Tony Dooley. The significance of that is, is that Dustin has, out of his own pocket and those own resources, he's given us a full suite of a team. He's hired me, he's hired Dean, he's hired Ed, he's hired Asa, and so we're poised and positioned to move forward because we're properly staffed. So what have we accomplished? Dustin went over this a few months ago, so I'm not gonna go through all the bullet points. I wanna talk about our support tickets, and I wanna talk about the 1-2-3 net fiber implementation. So as it relates to the service tickets, I know it's been challenging because when you have an IT problem, you just wanna grab a tech, you wanna just call them or send them a quick email and say, "Fix my problem." And that's easy to do, but the purpose of the ticketing system that we have in place is so we can get a visibility of what type of support tickets that we're, or what type of issues that we're having as a whole. We don't wanna be in a break-fix mode. We wanna be on a more of a proactive mode. So we're working very hard so we can try to figure out where we can consolidate, where we can do some cost savings as it relates to equipment, things of that nature. So, we have our department meetings, we wanna be able to look at those service tickets for the month and basically be able to tell you exactly what we worked on. And over a period of time, because we have this 1-2-3 network in place, we shouldn't have a whole lot of break-fix issues. So, let's talk about the 1-2-3 network for a second. Let me give you an analogy, it's the best way that I can explain what we've done and where we're going with the network. So, a network is like a highway, and there's a lot of roads, a lot of, a lot of documentation that needs to happen. So when Dustin and the Nerds team was challenged to put in this 1-2-3 network, we didn't have, we didn't have a map. We didn't have documentation. And so we've been trying to, for the most part, get the proper documentation. We've been trying to really figure out how the Inster network is designed. Just like an expressway, you have vehicles that travel on the expressway. On the network, you have devices. You have tablets, you have cell phones, you have laptops, printers, all those things use the network. And just like a highway, you have vehicles on the network, and the vehicle only travels, if that highway is laid out, six lanes, five lanes, it doesn't matter, the vehicle is only gonna go as fast as the vehicle is designed. Just like the network, we put this in, everybody's thinking that everything is gonna just work magically. We still got a lot of old devices, just like old vehicles. So we gotta upgrade the software, IOs, and do a lot of those things to make sure that we, we have the proper vehicles, proper devices on the network. So, you say, "Well, that's all good, so how are we gonna fix that? What are we gonna do to rectify that?" So one of the things we, we have started, Dean and I, Asa, and Dustin, we're gonna start sitting down with the department heads. We started with Department of Public Safety, or Public Services with Jerome Vivins. We wanna know, we ask Mr. Vivins, "What are your goals? What are you trying to accomplish? What technology are you using?" In that little short time that I've been on board since, what, March 1st, Mr. Vivins said, "You know, why do we all log in differently? Why don't we all have the same login credentials? Why don't we have all the same laptops?" And I said, "That's a good question. Why don't we?" Because we've been stuck with break-fix for this period of time, we haven't been able to get out and speak and figure out what do the departments need. So one of the, our goals is, is we wanna be your trusted advisor. So what does a trusted advisor do? What is, what is a trusted advisor? That means that we're going to make sure that you have the latest and greatest technology, even if it doesn't benefit us, even if it doesn't come from our solution suite. And so, you look at, what is it, uh, when I keep getting errors with BSNA, I'm starting to see we have a lot of errors with BSNA. Is that the right solution? Is it the only solution? Is it meeting the needs of the citizens of Inster? Is it meeting the needs of the department heads? Those are the things that we can do as your partner to bring BSNA in and give us a roadmap. Tell us what other cities are doing. Tell us how other cities are dealing with their clients when they can't pay their water bill. You know, so, so, so those are the things that we want to start doing beyond the break-fix, beyond the, you know, the desktop support. So, here's the bottom line. Why should you keep us? Simply because we wanna be here. We've made it an investment. You know, one of the things that we told the mayor is that, we say, "Even if you get rid of us, we're gonna leave you better than what we found you. We're gonna give you a roadmap. So whoever steps in, they're not gonna have to figure out what the security codes are or passwords. They're gonna have inventories, we're gonna asset tag." One of the things we started doing with the police department, if we started asset tagging all of their devices, in the K through 12 with public, with, um, with government and federal money, you're supposed to know what device was purchased with what funding. The only way to do that is you got an inventory and you have to get in front of that. That's not a break-fix initiative. So, that's one of the other things. And we also believe in the vision to make this a safe, secure city. We specialize in physical security and cameras. That's, that's where our expertise lies, and we do feel that we have some great solutions that we wanna bring to the, the department heads and, and see what the other cities are doing out there. You know, see why we can't do it here in Inster if other cities are leveraging technology. So, that's it in a nutshell. You know, I know we got a, a, a big crowd and a big agenda, but I just wanted to just bring it down a little bit from the bits and bytes and the specs and let everybody know we have a plan, we have a vision, and a lot of things that you don't see, you can physically see that we cleaned up closets, you know, the before-after. Those are things that you see, but you don't see the documentation, you don't see the sort of the services that we provide. So, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from this body?
Yes, Madam Chair. One thing, I guess I'm gonna have to come see y'all on Friday because my Microsoft office says it's gonna expire again.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll be here, you know, we keep having this back and forth issue, I don't know what it is with the license. But one of the, I guess, things we've been bringing up about with the payments to Nerds Express, like what we see in our monthly reports, or our vendor report, I should say, it'd be the regular salary, of course, you know, that's what it's gonna be, but a lot of times, some of the equipment and things like that that you guys purchase and get reimbursed, all we see is just multiple payments going out to Nerds Express, and we never know what's being purchased, what's being done. You know, we dealt, a couple of us have dealt with Asa directly, and he's resolved some issues for us and everything like that, and we've talked, but other than that, we'll just see all this exorbitant amount of money, you know, if you will, going out, and we're like, well, we're talking about, we're strapped for cash, but we paying Nerds Express, you know, all of this money. I, I guess what I was trying to say is, I think Councilman Watley had inquired one time about some invoices or something like that, just so we would have something additional that you're seeing Nerds Express, $12,000, $5,000, $4,000.
Um, I think what I've done in other cities, and we, when we're starting to implement these monthly meetings, is to do kind of a business summary.
Okay.
In terms of each month, this is what we've done, this is what we spent, this is what we purchased, this is how many tickets we closed. So, so it's just not, just a line item.
Right.
You know, there's a story behind what we're doing, there's a story behind the hardware that, that might have been purchased to support the network, that, that's part of, you know, what we need to build out. So here's what I wanna leave you on. The network is absolutely fantastic. There's nothing wrong with the Inster network. We are poised, we're in position to have an enterprise city. It's just a matter of, as you just mentioned, is, is working with the plan, starting to work with the different departments so we understand what the goal of the departments are, and then we can start, you know, mapping out a plan for that.
And additionally, I was gonna say too, because when you were talking about the equipment and getting to a certain point, I guess what's the anticipation day where you guys could say, "Okay, the city thinks there's not necessarily the greatest when it comes to IT because a lot of that cost to get it way up there," but what's the anticipation day where you foresee, saying, "Okay, we're in a good spot now, we can coast, we don't have to put in all these extra hours, all this extra equipment," just to kind of bring us some type of savings? Because when the budget comes up, and then there's a budget amendment that say, "IT, $113,000," I'm jumping up and down because I'm like, "Why are we paying more if this was all supposed to be in what they were supposed to be paid for the year?"
Council Chisholm, I wish I could show your report, but to answer that question is, is that we have to start using the ticketing system. Because when we put the tickets in, that's the footprint of what we actually have done. And it actually will work out in our favor if we showed how many hours that we actually spend versus what we actually get paid. You probably would have the reverse effect of saying, "How are we in business?" In some cases, because we have, we have multiple bodies here and a lot of times. And so, yes, I do hear that narrative that you see the, the costs and the expenses, but there's also the other narrative that we also put a lot of man-hours, you know, that don't get billed to the city. And that, that, you know, my time.
Dean's time.
Dustin's time. The only, only people that we're really billing right now is really for one tech, and a lot of times you have two techs here. You know, and, and that's to get to the point to where there's a little icon at the bottom of the screen, and it's help desk support, because we have newer equipment, have an upgraded network, and we don't have a lot of break-fix issues. So we're not spending an exorbitant amount of money, you know, going to fix things and troubleshoot things. So, so to answer your question, the sooner that we start using the portal and the ticketing system, the data will derive us to where we're at in terms of being, uh, because you will look at it, so we only got seven, or 10, or 15 help desk tickets. Right now, I don't know, Dean, we're African, we, we do a lot, we do a lot of help desk tickets, you know, a lot of support calls, but it should go down when we start upgrading the software, start meeting with the department heads and getting everybody on the same platforms. So when you have a uniform and you have commonality in parts, it's just like McDonald's, you duplicate success, but if you have a Dell, you have an HP, you have an Apple, there's too much complexity. So we need to create standards, and a lot of different things that will help drive down the cost of IT. So that's the direction that we're headed with these interviews with the departments, understanding the goals. One more thing I wanted to say about us. You guys have been mad at us. You guys have been angry at times, frustrated. That's when a relationship starts. You, you don't really have a relationship until you have some conflict. And we're still here, and we still wanna be here. We're still investing our time and resources here. So, you know, the one thing is, is that even if you do replace us and go with someone else, the reality is you don't really know what you have until you're battle-tested. And I think one of the things, we, we've been battle-tested over the year. I just wanted to point that one, the one thing out.
With the, uh, help, uh, with the ticket system, has everybody gotten on board with that yet as far as like everyone in the municipality, or is it still a thing where you're trying to get people to encourage them to utilize it?
Well, Safe has been helping us, I don't know if you're walking around here somewhere. He, he's been helping to facilitate the process of us using, so first, there's two things. There's a ticket portal, and then there's an email. The email is really a backup for the portal. So we should, so if you're, in the absence of you not being able to get onto the portal, then you send an email. So, we're trying to make it really easy to, to document the service calls, so we're gonna have some additional training, you know, that we'll be announcing and working with the department heads to make sure everybody's comfortable with the portal and the ticketing system. And so once that gets in place, we'll have the right data to determine, you know, where we should be at in terms of a break-fix versus on a consultative approach, where we're spending our time. So that'll be, that'll be a lot more clear.
Can we make sure the council is included with the training for that portal? Because you're, this is the first time I've ever, I'm ever hearing about a portal.
Yeah.
I hear about, I knew about the email, and I think some of my colleagues did as well, but you're telling me y'all gonna, y'all meeting with the different department heads and stuff, and, you know, I'm, I would like to be a part of that, so I would know the process too.
Yeah, and, and again, I just started March 1st full-time.
Okay.
So, so that's one of my initiatives that Dustin has tasked me with, is not just to meet with the department heads, but it's to meet with the council and all of the city, city employees. You know, try to do it in groups, because it's important to understand what's important to you, and how are you using the technology? What's not working? What have you heard other cities that are using? And, and that's where, as your IT service provider, it's up to us to take the technology and implement it into the city in a uniform way, so everyone is not independently buying separately from the overall plan. So that's really where we're trying to get to. Once the network was stabilized or gets stabilized, which it is, now we're working towards standardization and, and really just listening and understanding what's important to everybody.
Have we, have we already went ahead and dissolved or discontinued services with our past internet service providers since we've switched over solely to 1-2-3 net, or how are we still utilizing them?
Yeah. And when it comes to billing, are you familiar with that, Dustin?
I don't understand, um, Darryl. I'm sure.
Yeah.
We still have some of it.
Yeah. And, and that's, and again, that's a good point. I mean, you, there is, there is a, a need to have redundancy, but there is a, there's a, there's a price break for that too. And, and so that's something that, you know, we will get over to Darryl when it comes to licensing, when it comes to even potentially leasing equipment versus renting. You know, those are where we become your subject matter experts and can help with the scenarios of what's best for Inster.
Right, yeah, and I understand about the redundancy, because I know sometimes when I would say AT&amp;T, we would either be the primary, Comcast would be the secondary, or vice versa, but it was a minimum, you know, of what they needed.
Right.
Just if it went offline, those particular services that didn't need to go offline could still operate until the other portion got brought back up. So that's why I was just curious, I didn't want those companies to be billing us a top dollar when we're not even using them but a quarter or an eighth of the time.
Right.
And as far as the technology plans, we, we do wanna definitely not pay for, you know, AT&amp;T or whatever the current dedicated circuit is, and rather go like a cheaper Comcast that do, you know, a baseline connectivity so they can still operate with minimal services there as well.
Okay.
So that is part of the overall plan.
Thank you. You have the floor.
First one to ask, is IT team here also affiliated with the cameras and stuff that we're putting up in the community? Are y'all involved in that?
Um, we are aware of it. In terms of involved or we're a vendor, we're not, it's, it's not our equipment. Do we have experience in doing that? Absolutely. Do we feel that we can provide some, some guidance as your trusted advisor and, and make sure we have the best solution in place? Absolutely. We can help with that.
Right now it's still in the hands of the people who've installed it.
Yes.
Do I have any other questions?
Yes. Unless someone else is. In reference to the money that Councilman Chisholm was talking about, what we're saying is that we are to watch the money, and if there are no checks and balances, it's difficult to do that. Now, when we see something on the check register that says Nerds Express, $1,500, but there's no invoices, and you say that we went and bought directly from the provider, well, business is normally done where you invoice the city, the city pays you, that way we keep track of all this. What we were asking for the last time was some of these invoices, so we can follow these, these costs.
Okay.
So we haven't gotten that yet.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with sharing that with anybody that you want me to share that way, yeah.
Well, we want you to share with us.
Okay, yeah.
We are the fiduciary, so yeah, we would like to see, not that you, you know, it's not a matter of trust or anything like that, it's business.
Yeah.
That's business.
No, I have...
That's, and I believe I asked Dustin the last time for that, and he said, "Yeah, they were." And also, that funny noise you hear every few minutes from my computer going, "Diddly-ding-ding," whatever, it's saying, "You're unlicensed." And that's been happening for quite some time, so, huh?
I said, "Mine's the same one."
Yeah, yeah, so, um, like I said, and like I told Dustin the last time, I don't wanna know how the electricity gets to the bulb, I just want the bulb to come on when I flick the switch.
Right.
So, the technical aspect of it, all of that is yours, the money aspect is ours, and that's what I'd like to see exactly where and how this money is going.
Okay. So I, you asked Dustin, now you're asking me, and I'll take the responsibility and accountability to make sure you have it. And I'll work with the team to get that for you. But again, with the, with the analogy of, you know, the network and the devices, we definitely have to work from a central perspective when it comes to licensing, because there's benefits in buying citywide licenses versus buying individually from departments. And so that's phase two of this, of us coming into place in terms of getting us to where we can make some cost savings and some efficiencies.
Washington, the floor?
Yeah, she's you.
Watley, okay. So I just had a question, and I know that, I'm not sure if my colleagues have the same issue, but I'm not sure if this is part of your phase two, but I know personally myself, I've been getting a lot of spam emails, probably the most I've ever seen within the last year or two. So what is Nerds Express's plan for that? I'm not sure if my colleagues probably have the same issue in regards to receiving a whole bunch of spam mail.
Yeah. Well, well, again, that is a, another citywide rollout.
I don't know where we're at with that, Dustin.
Yeah, I would have to definitely see, because I was not aware, I know there were some ones that were early on, that we definitely flagged, and cut down where they were. that were early on, W, W flagging, but not where they were with Microsoft to get those. But there's a new variant of spam. If you just forward me a few little emails, then we can just, you know, track that and be able to work directly with Microsoft to flag them and put them out.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just forward email directly to me, and I can work with that.
Okay. Is there anyone else? I'd like to say something before we close, y'all. Uh, what mechanisms do you have when our system goes down and the people that work here can't do anything? Do you have a pa, a plan B where they can at least work, do, you know, because I've got a lot of calls when they call DPS, the phones are not working, or the computer's not working. She's been down for the week. What, what mechanism do you have, um, a plan? If this goes down, we can go to this system.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So, currently...
It comes to the point, so, because we are taping, so we want the people at home to be able to hear as well.
Correct. So there's a few mechanisms that we've already kind of implemented. Actually, one was under my own, um, investment for the most part, because I was concerned about, you know, potential failures. Just when we walked into the situation, I seen a lot of red flags. So if there's a citywide server outage or environment outage, there's, we have this solution called DOW that we implemented, which is doing a daily backup, where it actually backs the information locally. Then at every day at like midnight, it dumps it to the cloud. With that technology, say, you know, God forbid, the, you know, the building isn't operable for whatever reason, you know, flood or whatever the case is, it can spin up a virtual copy of all your existing data where you can work remotely and still be able to access that virtual server. So that's one thing. Now, if there's a, as a, if there's a user issue, uh, we do have the VPN, uh, which I know ASA has been slowly rolling it out to various, um, people that were specified to have remote access. And they can always work outside the building if there is, like, you know, their local machine dies, or the case is, they can work externally through the VPN connection, which has been set up and, and it's been rolling out as people have been requesting it.
Okay.
So that's part of what, going back to Tony's earlier mention, working with the department heads, because that'd be good information. No, if there's, you know, you designate these staff members to have, you know, VPN access, then we can always get that, you know, deployed. Um, the other thing is, too, if there is a phone outage, you guys are using, uh, what they call RingCentral. RingCentral does not rely on a, actually, any equipment on site. You could literally take that phone and go, go to China somewhere and plug it in, and, um, it's gonna work just like you're at the city of Inxter. Um, so that, I mean, I'm only saying it because there's another layer to the top of that. If...
So, do you say we have that as of today?
As of currently, yes, correct.
Yeah, because I, I've got a lot of calls saying they was not answering the phone. So due to the system was down. So does all department have that? Or does only certain departments?
No, the whole city has it. So that goes back to another, it's two parts, two parts. One, one part is training, meaning that we should show the staff members, if your phone is down, or there's any issue, you can go on your cell phone, forward the calls to your cell phone. And we can work out how that will look, and we can train.
So what you're saying, that we have the capability there, but we're not understanding how to use that.
Exactly, exactly. So that's one part to it. The second part is, um, you know, basically, that, that consulting with the department heads to figure out what is your fellow plan? Because you have the technology to do it, but just understanding, how do you want that workflow to operate? Because if the phones go down, internet goes down, desk phone doesn't ring, you know, for DPS, who do the calls go to? What numbers get forwarded? And then show you, okay, do steps A, B, and C. Now, these, these are going to various users' cellphones. Or do you want the users to do it themselves? They can do that as well. So there's more of a understanding and understanding what the workflow would look like to build that redundancy. But you do have the technology currently.
So I think for me, um, you guys have been in here, what, almost two years, two and a half years?
About a year and a half.
I think that, and I know our system was pre-old, and I know technology, it takes a long time to get to where we need to be. But certain things that you said tonight, to me, should have been implemented from day one. Like, okay, meeting with the department heads to find out what you need, what you didn't need. So I think a lot of time has been wasted because we didn't get that done. Um, another thing, too, is even from the downtime, and they can use it from their cellphones. That should have been implemented day one, because it's very important that our systems stay up. And if they're standing at their desk because they can't get in there, then they're just sitting here. And the city is not gonna stop because our system is down. I think that should have been implemented day one, too, just in case. So some of these, the stuff that you're coming with now, I think should have been implemented prior. But, okay, but I yield, if anybody else had anything.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you anyway. Thank you.
Just to piggyback on the technology that he was talking about, as far as the redundancy system for employees, I actually have the Office at Hand, or Office at Work app on my phone. It does work. I can text residents, they can text the actual city number. And then I have an extension, so anybody in the municipality can call, and it rings through the application itself. Um, it also sends me an email. If you send me a text message or a voicemail, it'll shoot me an email to my city email, letting me know, and it'll have it transcribed or whatever. So it is a great system. And I know everybody's not technologically inclined. Um, and it does take some trainings and, and, and test and trial, too, to make sure that's working appropriately. But it, it works great.
Yeah, but that's, that's our job. You know, I know we spend a lot of time beginning, trying to get things or get stabilized. Matter of fact, we didn't have access to that system for the longest. Uh, and once we were able to get access to it and start to fully understand how the city's currently set up, because we had to rebuild all this reverse engineering, um, now I think we're, we're poised to have these meetings and understand this, so that we can work with the department heads to roll it out. And some of the stuff, we're just planning, it's not even implemented. You know, some of the remote access, they never existed until we brought in these various technologies where we're going to see. So a lot of stuff is still newer initiatives. But, you know, we're trying to juggle between, okay, break fix and new, drawouts and strategic developments. It took a little time to get out of that break fix mode into a more strategic, um, position with the city, where it's providing consultation, providing best practices so that there is always, you know, always enough time in a lot of cases.
Okay. Well, thank you. I do have one more, I'm sorry, one more question. And, um, when Councilwoman, Councilwoman Watley said about the invoices, I know you give the invoices to the city treasurer to get paid. So it's gonna be your responsibility, I think, to give, to provide, not them. They give you the invoices, I guess, when you give us a report, you can give us a copy of that if, okay? Because I don't want them to be no responsible for anything else other than what they, you know, what they do, okay? All right, that's all. Uh, Councilwoman Watley?
Yeah, just one question about this transferring to your personal devices. That brings up another problem for me, because the reason we asked for a city laptop is because we were using our personal devices, and there, you know, anything you do in the city becomes playable or things of that nature. So how is the liability when you're transferring city stuff to your personal device?
Well, I would say that in the case of RingCentral, it is an independent cellphone app that's tied to the city. It's an overlay of your personal cell phone. And I know that some of our other...
You're talking, wait, wait, let's make sure we're talking about the same thing. You mean a personal cell phone issued by the city? Or just your personal device you have?
Well, there's two things. I know a lot of the departments, they have their own, uh, personal cell phones from the city.
Okay. Well, that I can understand. But any other, you know, because everyone is so litigious nowadays, you know, you don't want to have, you know, your boyfriend's last letter to you out there with everybody else, you know? So that's my only concern is when you said to transfer this stuff to your personal, we're talking about something that the city owns and the city issues. So you really shouldn't be doing anything on it but city stuff.
Correct. And I do want to say, too, that, you know, just as another little tidbit, again, it, it may not be as applicable to your question, but the RIT Office at Hand application is actually a dedicated cellphone app that does not necessarily interface with, if you do use your personal cell phone, which, again, I'm not recommending that. But if you did, it, all the text messages, calls, voicemails reside within that application. The application goes to whatever device that's tied to. So it's not integrated directly to your personal cell phone, but it's a overlay to the cell phone, where everything itself contains that. So somebody wasn't potentially for you, it wouldn't for you personally, it would for you with anything that's tied to that actual soft app. Because that'd be all city-related business, if that kind of...
I'm sorry, not being techie, you know, I'm sitting here going la, la, la.
Yeah. But no, I don't want to get into...
But, okay. And, um, yeah, all right. So it wouldn't be to that. And I just forgot.
Yeah, if I text, your RingCentral number is not going to go to your personal cell phone. When you have the app, it'll go to the app on your cell phone, if that kind of exists.
No, but that's okay. I have a Steven. Anyway.
Yeah.
Don't encourage her.
But those, um, that particular thing, and like I said, I forgot it, came back, and I forgot it again. Darn it. Oh, well. So much for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? All right, we thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Our next, um, presentation is USI.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
May I approach?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, I brought some hard copy documents, uh, to pass along for our presentation.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Trying to turn the sound up. All right.
Good evening.
Is it all right to go? Are you guys ready? Uh, good evening, uh, and thank you for taking the time, uh, out of your meeting to have a conversation with us today about the city's insurance program. My name is Matthew Carter, Vice President of Municipalities and Public Entities for USI Insurance Services. And on the screen, you'll see my partner, Greg Gabridge, Vice President as well. And, uh, we're here today to talk to you guys about, uh, some work that we've done for the city. USI Insurance Services in the City of Inxter, uh, first started communicating back in 2019. In 2019, Mayor Wimberly asked us to do an independent third-party audit of the city's insurance program. We're here today to go over our findings with the board and to discuss potential next steps to correct the deficiencies that we found within the insurance program. The mayor's allotted, uh, a few minutes for us to give this presentation. I think he told us to limit it to 30 minutes. So we're gonna spend, you know, maybe 15, 20 minutes talking about the findings, and then we'll open it up to Q and A. Greg, if you want to turn on the, the slideshow, we'll start that up. Now, based on our findings, we believe that the City of Inxter's insurance program is deficient in various areas. The main goal is to identify the deficiencies, identify next steps to correct the deficiencies, and then we've also presented a timeline as to what the, what it would look like if we actually corrected those deficiencies. Next slide, Greg. So most people don't know who USI is, and that gets me really excited, because I get to talk about a company that I love being a part of. USI is the largest privately-held brokerage in the nation, with 200 offices across the country, 8,000 employees. We currently insure just about $2 billion in revenue, and we work with cities like Chicago, Atlanta, Dallas. Locally, we've done projects for the City of Ann Arbor, and we've done work for the City of Grand Rapids Transit System. What we want to do is we would like to take some of the ideas and strategies that we use for those cities and implement them for the City of Inxter. Next slide, please, Greg. So, uh, you can go to the next one, Greg. Sorry. So unlike, uh, unlike most small brokerages around the, uh, around the state, we're very different. We have a huge network dedicated to the city. As you can see on the screen here, we've actually printed out our network page, which shows all the team members assigned to the City of Inxter's case. The reason why we're showing this right now is because all of these people have had their hands in on the analysis that we did for the city. Some of the important folks to point out are not myself and Greg, which you'll see under the consultants tab. But you'll see that we've also have claims advocates, risk control teams, and analytics teams available for the city. And that's what we believe the city needs. Greg, we're gonna go to the next slide. So during our review, we've identified about nine different deficiencies with the program. And I'm gonna let Greg Gabridge talk a little bit more about the deficiencies that we found, and then we'll get into the plan to fix it. Greg, go ahead. You know what? I'm sorry. It's, it's coming out of this right here. One second, Greg. My apologies for the technical difficulties, everyone. I apologize. I hear it from here. Greg, give us a sound check.
Sound check. Is that better?
Can everyone hear okay?
Okay.
All right. Okay, Greg, go ahead. Greg, go ahead.
Okay. Like Matt said, um, good. Okay. As we, as Matt said, we got approached, um, a few years ago to do an independent third-party review. The next three slides we're gonna go through, there's a lot of information on it, and a lot of it may be technical. Um, but really, if I were to sum up the next three slides, it'd be what we, what we found is, Matt said, is some efficiency. And really, what we believe that we can do is reduce the exposure and reduce the cost for the city. So this slide that we're looking at here, I'll just run down the business issue, which is on the left-hand side there, and kind of hit the financial impact on the right side. Um, when we first looked at the open claims, um, there were about eight open claims with the information that we were given, there was not a process put in place to actually reduce the claims. So part of what we do with the claims people that run the prior, prior to Netflix line would be to actually put together a plan in place to be able to reduce those claims. By doing so, from actually getting them from when they first happened to having a plan to close them, we should be able to reduce the cost by 30 or 50 percent, which I said there, there was eight open ones at the time that we did this. Um, the other thing that we found is the second quote item, there's two different TPAs that are on the plan or on different parts of the program that you guys currently have in place. And what we've done in the past is just by going through an RFP process, we've been able to eliminate about 20 percent of cost just by putting that competition in there. And then also, they would get some economies because they would be able to do more than one line, which would help the TPA that would be selected as well. Um, I'm gonna skip the next one, go down to the bottom one, which really isn't an insurance item, but USI has a relationship with, um, a couple of different organizations. And what they do is they had a different solution for unemployment insurance. And on this, as, as, and we've been able to cut at least 40 percent savings of what current, um, what's in place currently. And I've done a handful of these, and I would say it's probably in that 25 percent range. This would be an extreme case, but we don't really have the information to be able to gauge it. But I would be very comfortable with thinking that we can cover out about 20 percent from that. One of the next ones, um, standard property policies, there's, like Matt was talking about with our dialogue, we have a group of people that actually have negotiated with our carriers that we write with. And any policy that is issued and delivered to USI or the clients, we have pre-negotiated endorsed... we have pre-negotiated endorsements on it, which eliminates some gaps that we found in there, basically to sober up quickly. The other thing, I know that we've had several conversations about cyber, and it's kind of a good thing to piggyback on the conversation that was just had. There's not a true cyber policy in place right now. And that's something that we think that we can put in place in really not much cost because of the other savings that we think that we found. The overall program will be less expensive, and coverage will be better. Next bullet was something that I think has come up a couple of different times, because as Matt said, we presented a little while ago. And part of the missing components that we found or that we've gathered is that there isn't a true strategy in place for renewal. And I know you guys had some difficulty or then shared that there was some difficulty in renewing one of the policies last year. And part of that is because there wasn't this plan set in place. Last bullet, I'll also give that one, but it's more to going to the network and the services that we provide. Because everybody that was on that sheet would in some way, shape, or form touch the program and will provide a service to the city, and that would be at no additional cost. And this was talking about when we first were engaged, we were talking about the COVID and the things that came out of COVID and different protocols that need to be in place. And as Matt said, we did some work for some of the other cities that made that a lot smoother, put plans in place, and it was a different time and now we're kind of coming out of that. These are the last three bullets are really where we see the most, the biggest impact and the biggest savings. The workers' compensation program right now, the city is currently self-insured. When the plan was first put in place and we gathered it, it was probably, I think, the deductible or attachment point was, I believe, it was about $200,000. And then as carriers went away from doing self-insurance, they ratcheted it up. Right now, you have a 500, or the city has a $500,000 per plane deductible, which is significant. And with the research that we've done, and I kind of skipped over some of the other resources that we have, but typically, and this is going to kind of hold true for the next two bullets as well, typically, we do not see a city the size of the City of Inkster with a high deductible like that for a number of reasons. One, from just a former cost standpoint, being that your claims are, what we've seen and analyzing, your claims are a lot less than that. Hopefully, you're getting the true credit you have to carry such a high retention of $500,000. And then in addition to that, any claim that were happening, and you guys have, you know, some significant exposures as a city, but the city would be responsible for the first $500,000 of each claim. So I know that Matt's come up in conversations where it's a line item that hasn't been difficult to budget because you put a figure in there and says, oh, you're going to budget $100,000 for this, and then there are always an additional cost. And I think it's been mentioned two or three times in separate conversations that it's a difficult one to target, but the reason why is because you're carrying this high retention. So I'm going to kind of take the next two bullets too, because what you have is not only a high deductible on the workout policy, but when you look at your liability policies, which cover all the other liabilities, you're at a $2 million retention. And I believe that the policy that was put in place last year only provides a million-dollar coverage, and on top of that, $2 million retention again. And before, the prior renewal, you had a $2 million deductible, but there was a $6 million coverage on top of that. So you still had that. I don't remember if there was an aggregate out of it or not. But these three are really the biggest exposures that we see because we think that we can drastically reduce the exposure or the retention. And I think that's the biggest issue with the program right now. Did you hear all that, Matt?
You did.
Yep.
So if you want to, you can go to the next slide. So we talked a little bit about the deficiencies.
As I say, I was just saying, Matt, sorry, I'll be there a few. I only asked you, I kind of ran through a lot of information there. Is there any question that's difficult for me to do it this way when I can't see everybody?
Okay. No questions right now, Greg. So we talked a little bit about the deficiencies. We outlined some of them very quickly. Let's talk about next steps and what they would look like. So the three main next steps are as such. The first thing that we would like, that we would like, is we would like for USI Insurance Services to be appointed as broker of record because we can't make any of the changes that we've discussed or fix any of the deficiencies that we've outlined without being able to control the program. Once we're able to control the program, what we want to do is we want to do a further analysis to find out what's changed since we looked at it last, and then we want to design an appropriate program for the city. Now, let's think about a house, okay? Yeah, we've got a building, but when the wind blows, we feel the draft coming through, and we're cold inside. What we want to do is we want to take insulation and fill up that building. We want to put new windows up. We want to make sure that we stop that wind from coming through, and we can only do that by building the appropriate policy. Now, once we have identified what that policy looks like and what the best options are, and we come back and present it to you, the next thing we have to do is actually go back and get that policy from the marketplace. And that is my favorite part of it all, because that's when the negotiations happen. So you would have all those people on that network slide negotiating specifically for the city with those line items that they specialize in. And this is what separates us from the competition, because when we go out to the marketplace, we're not just, we don't just go out with an ask. We go out with a tell. And that tell is based off of data that comes from the city. Now, historically, agents fill out applications, and they send the applications out to the best markets, trying to find who's going to give them the cheapest price for the best coverage. Our tell is a little bit different, and it includes your data. It includes an executive summary built to get built by us with pricing targets and models and analytics to go to the underwriters with a specific ask in mind, specific pricing involved, and specific endorsements added to the policy to make coverage better and less restrictive. So Greg, is there anything that you'd like to ask or that you'd like to put in there?
I think that you did a good job of summing it up.
Okay. So once we get that from the marketplace, what we would do is we would bring back a suitable, detailed plan back to the city with a timeline attached to show what changes we plan on making, how those would come, and we would include the board through every step of the process. So if you take a look to the back of the package that I just handed out, there's an appendix page. In the appendix, you'll see that we've included a timeline of what this looks like and how this would go. We've also included case studies and examples of work that we've done for other municipalities here in the metro Detroit area. And you'll find other valuable information related to cyber, executive and professional liabilities, and other documentation to kind of help you, help illustrate what we do for clients just like you. So now that we've been able to just kind of talk a little bit about everything, we want to open it up to Q and A. Are there any questions from the board at this point?
Madam Chair. Yes, so I wrote some things down as you were talking. So basically, you, your company versus what we have right now, it wouldn't cost us any more than what we're already paying out.
Greg, do you want to answer, or you want me to answer?
As I say, can you repeat that for me, Matt?
I was just asking, basically, in comparison, I guess, to the insurance company, liability company we have now brokered, it wouldn't cost us any more utilizing your services than what we're already paying?
That is correct. So right now, the placing agent gets paid via commission. For the exact same commission, we would do the same thing, except for we would add additional services that you may not be getting right now. The risk control teams and the claims advocates would be there 24/7 to stand by the city, to work through claims, to build out risk mitigation programs, and mitigate exposures and claims from happening in the first place. This sounds like something that the city's not getting right now, and we would include those services in at the same cost that you'd pay your existing broker. Any other questions?
I guess in addition to that, I'd like to add the communication piece because that's really significant with the timeline as far as what is happening and the trigger points on there so that the org doesn't have to wait for an update. They will know what is being done and when it's being done. And if there's any questions on that, they can email either you or I and get an update on it.
At any time.
And part of that also, that other plan is to be able to go to carriers that have not been approached, that we found out that have not been approached, that really should be approached. And again, looking at reducing the overall exposure for the city.
One final question. I know back in the, I believe it was the summer, the late fall, some emergency powers had to be invoked for us to get some liability coverage because the broker we had was going out of business of covering municipalities. And I believe we pay a very high cost for that right now. I don't know if it's because of the city's rating or just because of who we had to hurry up and go with. How would your company mitigate or reduce something as such if you worked with us?
Greg, did you hear that question?
I didn't know. Can you repeat it for me?
So the councilman said that last year around, I'm sorry, August, late, I'm sorry, late summer, early fall, they received a large increase from the broker for their liability portion. How would we prevent something like that from happening going forward?
Well, I guess a couple of different ways. But I think the first thing is, but we're talking about the communication because really, when we're looking at a renewal, we should be looking out for the 120 days, or we would start 120 days out. The initial part of that process of negotiating a renewal, we'll approach all the carriers and find out what they're planning on or what the expectations are for that renewal. I believe there was a couple of different things that happened with that particular line of coverage because I believe it was not renewed. That's why I'm...
That is correct.
All right. What happened with that, I can't really say. But what I do know is the policy that we reviewed in there, the carrier was going to not renew it. They are required to get a 90-day notice on that. So when we're starting on 120 days, most of the carriers that we find, if you're in a situation where they're either getting out of a line of business or a particular industry, we know that generally more than a year out, because they'll go through, get a renewal, you know, as you go through the process. They'll say, you know what? Our appetite is changing. This is something you might want to look at now, so you don't get, so you have more than 90 days. You really have more than a year to find a proper placement for it. So two things. One, communication. Two, our structured renewal process, and when we begin that, and market updates throughout the year. So nobody should be caught off-guard.
Good. Thank you. I have nothing else, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, Paula. Now, you take, okay, your company, are you taking over the liability for the City of Inkster?
We would like that, yes. So we could correct the problems and initiate risk control and claims advocates on behalf of the city. Hold on one second.
I'm not sure my colleague already asked this, but how much did you say it would actually cost the city?
You would actually, so Greg, the question was, is how much would it actually cost the city to hire USI?
Right.
Do you want to answer, or you want me to answer?
Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say. Go ahead, Greg. Go ahead. You go.
We're not going to add an additional, so there's not an additional fee for our services. We're paying a commission by the insurance carriers like the current program, so there's not an additional fee. If the city would like to carve that out, then we can take a fee for service and then not be paid commission, so you know exactly what we will be paying.
But for all intents and purposes, we would take payment the exact same as the current broker. So whatever, they would get paid by the end of the year. We would get the exact same amount and still be able to offer the services that we're trying to implement to bring the exposures down for a city. Yes, sir.
Okay. So if you take it over, are you going to give us the same type of policy that we have now?
Well, that's a great question, sir. And what we would do is we would actually scour the marketplace to try to build a specific program for the city. Because, you know, looking at the way the policy's structured right now...
One sec. Is someone's phone is on? Can they please turn it off? Thank you. Go ahead.
I kind of lost my train of thought. But, you know, we would, in essence, just take, we wouldn't charge any more for what we're doing. We would actually, it would come out to the same amount. And as we look, we would want to build a specific policy specifically for the city, not just take one off the shelf. We would actually want to build it specific to the exposures.
Let me just piggyback on that a little bit.
Okay. Well, what I'm saying is, okay, like, what would be, okay, we understand that the cost would be lower. But what would it be for as coverage that we would get?
So that's a fantastic question. So what we would be trying to build out is a program that gives you better coverage, that covers more, and the coverage is broader than what you currently have. And it would be specifically tailored to the operations of the city. So to give an example, you know, the police and fire, right? We want to make sure that the police and fire have every endorsement that broadens out the policy because in the event of a claim, you want to get as much money back as possible in the amount of, in the claim settlement as quickly as possible. You don't want that kind of lingering out and keeping open. You want to be paid and moving on to the next thing and staying in business. So that's what we would be looking to try to do, get the broadest coverage.
But that ain't answering the part that I want to hear. Okay? Write down, say, if we had, took your company and insurance company, how much coverage would we have versus, how much would we have to kick in? Say, we got sued for $10 million now.
Well...
What at that point, if we took your company, what would be our share that we would have to pay versus how much you'd pick up?
Well, remember, we're not a carrier. We're just the broker. Greg, you want to, did you hear the question?
I've heard that question. Was the question, if they were to be sued right now, what would their out-of-pocket cost be?
Is that a correct assessment of the question, sir?
Right.
Yes, that's a correct assessment.
So this is one of the deficiencies that we see with the program. Based on the way the program is currently structured, the city would have to come up with $2 million to cover that deductible. The current program, we have a million dollars, so they would pay a million dollars. And then the balance, the other $7 million, will be back on the city.
I think he meant if we went with you.
Oh, so Greg, he was talking about if we went with us. So what he explained was how it is current.
We know what the policy is right now for the city.
Right.
But I'm trying to say, if we went with you, what would be the advantage at that point?
Well, the advantages would be, you know, obviously, we would build out, we would look to find out what the maximum probable loss would be. And if that $10 million, if you didn't have enough coverage, we would build it so that you had enough coverage to cover that full $10 million, right? And try to do it at the same exact cost of what you're paying now. Does that sound right, Greg? Is that a...
Yes. So what you really want to do is, right now, we feel that there's too much risk retention, meaning that you, the city, is taking on too much of the risk and the out-of-pocket costs. So what we would do is we would structure it differently so that the insurance company would pay more and the city would be less responsible.
Right.
Makes it a lot more predictable. And if you look at it, to that question, is if you had a loss like that, you would bankrupt the city.
Right.
With the current program, I believe, based on the financials I looked at, that would take a huge hit to the city.
Correct.
Yes. I am a big proponent of risk management, and I've heard you mention a lot of things about risk.
Yes, ma'am.
What happens with your accessibility? Because what happens is people come, they sell us their product, and then they disappear. And you don't know. So I want to know about accessibility. So, I want to know about accessibility and the risk management portion, because the current company, when we tried to put risk, risk management together, came in and said, we do risk management, blah, 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 and nothing has been done since then. So, accessibility to you guys.
Did you hear that, Greg?
No, yeah, I heard risk management, that's all I heard.
So, Councilwoman Wiley would like to know about how accessible, the accessibility between our risk management team and the city after the services are signed over to us.
Well, okay, that is a great question, because the placement is, so, everything that is done up until the placement of the policy, the negotiating, the program structure and the design, all that is all great, once the program is put in place, really, that's when the job starts. And again, that timeline, we can add other things on it, that's a, that's a fluid timeline, so anything that we would uncover as we go through that process of some placement would be put out of that timeline to be handled throughout the rest of the balance of the year, or through the next year, and then also, there's a three- to five-year timeline that we always, excuse me, that we always look, probably three years or five years, and we would have a plan in place, so that is a lot.
Right, and then, as far as the risk managers themselves, the city would have full access to our risk management, to the risk managers assigned to the account 24/7. So, you know, every, every, you know...
We would operate really as an, as the city's risk management team.
Right.
Because there isn't one in place right now.
Right, so our risk managers would, would, would give you everything that you need, taking all of that work off the city.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, we will get the same services we're paying for now, enhanced services for the same price.
That's absolutely correct.
That's it in a nutshell.
That's it in a nutshell. We, you would get more services from us that you currently don't get at the same exact price that you're paying your current agent. So, that really leads us back to that whole conversation of the broker of record, and what that does is, is that would actually fire your current placing agents, and you would appoint USI as the broker to work forward in the renewal, and then that timeline that's attached in the appendix, we would follow that timeline to the T, and we can add and move things around as necessary, just to make sure that the city gets the best service at the best price.
Okay, just one other thing. In the last check register, there were about 40 different insurance agencies that were listed as being paid. Is that something you go through and streamline that to?
Greg, did you hear that?
Did you?
So, recently, the check register had shown multiple different bills or fundages, you know, being sent out to different agencies. Is that something that we can assist with?
Absolutely.
Streamline that?
So, there's, there's two different things. If we consolidate the carriers and have some of the carriers, it's kind of one of the things that we have to dig into right now, if we have, whether we have multiple carriers on different lines of coverage, or if we can get more lines with one carrier, but either way, we would assist with an allocation, and we would be able to say, okay, this, this check went too chuffed for this line of coverage, everything needs to be very detailed. And then part of that goes to, and I really like the way that the gentleman said before, is really what we're looking to do, started this a little while ago, is to leave the city in a better position than we caught, than we, than we found it. And part of that is just the organization, and we have some, I try to, either we don't have that, but just we organize the policies and having them accessible by everybody. We have tools where everybody can have different password, different levels of security where they can see different things. We, there's a whole bunch that we didn't really dig into that would be available to the city.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I have two questions. What makes you different from any other insurance company when you say, our $2 million that we have to put up first, possibly see if we can lower that and the insurance company paying more? How can you do that? Because don't you go by credit ratings like everyone else, and how many claims a municipality has had, has had? So, how can you say that we, we self-insure right now because of all the claims that we have?
Sure.
So, how can you tell me that you're gonna try to see if the insurance company can pay more versus the municipality plan? Can you, the municipality is playing, can you explain that?
Greg, did you hear that?
Can you repeat it, please? I got, I got, I catch you part of it, but I don't want to start answering the question and then not actually...
Okay, can you, can you hear me now?
I can hear that movement.
Okay, I want to, I want you to explain to this body, when you said that we are self-insured right now because of all of the claims that we've had, so we have to pay the first $2 million upfront before the insurance can kick in. Now, you, your presentation, you saying that you're gonna possibly see if the insurance companies can pay more out-of-pocket versus City of Inglewood paying out-of-pocket. How can that be done?
Well, so, part of this goes back to what Matt said, that is a great question, because I've taken over so many programs where, what the philosophy in the past was, if we push the retentions or the deductibles higher, the fixed cost is going to be less. And so, you see the retentions and I think the work comp, I think I mentioned that, where originally it's about $250,000, now you have $500,000. And it's not because of the claims, so our argument right now, again, we need some updated data, but what we had at the time was, you're upping that retention when the insurance companies wants, they want to be pushed farther away from having to pay a claim. But if all your claims are in this, let's say, $50,000 or less, the insurance company is not going to charge you less as you go from a $300,000 deductible to a $400,000 deductible, to a $500,000 deductible, because really, all your claims are in that first band, and so you won't get the credit. You'll still get some credit, but you won't get the credits that you should. So, what I've been able to do with other programs is I take that retention down or completely eliminate it with similar costs. And I believe when we looked at the work comp, it was the, the spend on a three-year average or something was close to $225,000, if I remember correctly, and being that we've had other placements, I, I'm pretty comfortable that we could get a guaranteed cost, which would mean the first dollar of a claim would be paid by the insurance company, and I think would be in that $250,000 range. The other thing that that would do is it would make it a lot more predictable, so from a budgeting standpoint, it would be a lot easier because you put the line item that, the work comp is going to be, I'll just take that $250,000, you're not going to ever pay more. Right now, if you have it on your budget as, I think it was $125,000, which is never coming out, $125,000, based on what I've gone back and looked at, because you have this high deductible, and knock on wood, the good thing is, you haven't had multiple large claims, but you have the potential and the exposures to have that, so you could, you could pay a million dollars for worker, workers' compensation losses for next year. So, part of what we would have to do with going through our analysis is kind of, again, balance that, risk retention and risk transfer by risk transfer, meaning we're gonna transfer that all to the insurance company and have them pay that, but we will know, the city would know exactly what the cost is going to be, you don't have to worry about large deductibles. Most companies and municipalities that have retentions and large deductibles, like your current program, have a very strong balance sheet, and are financially stable and are capable or have the money or the reserves to be able to pay those claims. And that's when you start getting the high retentions.
And, and that, and Greg, forgive me for jumping. Right.
The retentions that you have at your program are for large cities, not cities the size of the City of Inglewood.
Okay, thank you. I know, and once I read this, because this is the first that we've all gotten this information, and I know we probably will have more questions after this, but thank you for, is there anyone else? You have a question?
Treasure Green, yes, sir.
Right, so, I'm an insurance agent myself, I've been in the industry for 20 years, so I understand what's going on here. So, let me shed some light on some things. First of all, those multiple carriers, though, that's not for our liability insurance, that's a lot of that is health insurance, which we've already consolidated, that's what we're working on there. Second thing is, the TPA services, are you saying you're gonna provide the services that the TPAs provide, so we won't need a TPA?
Uh, no, sir. What we're saying is, is that we believe that the best practice in this instance, since you have multiple TPAs, would be...
What happened?
Oh, so it's changed now, down, down to one? So, then, what we would like to do is, we would still try to do an RFP for the TPAs, add competition into the mix, and bid TPAs against each other, because as of right now, if you have one TPA, or maybe back, you know, a few years ago, you had two, what we want to do is, we would want them to give more ancillary services to the city at that same cost. So, when we put it together, the RFP for the TPAs, we would have all of the different TPAs come out, be partaking in this RFP, and then find out what services that they're gonna offer at no additional charge that the city can benefit from.
Okay. Well, then, I have a question then, too. What, which TPA was eliminated?
Uh, Sedgwick.
Uh, Sedgwick. Greg.
Okay. Well, then, that's a good thing, because really, that one's been on the work comp for a very long time, Sedgwick can't handle those claims, but it'd be really good to get a couple others back in there, because you have some other smaller regionals or niche players that would be, would be good as well. But if, if it was one of the two, I would say that that was probably what they wanted to knock it down to.
Okay, and then the other thing is, we got into this high deductible because there was a, the TPA, speaking of the TPA, didn't report a claim. So, when they did the search, a claim came up that wasn't on the report that was provided by the carrier, so therefore, when we got the policy, it's like, well, why didn't you guys report this claim? And it was a failure of the TPA to report it, so therefore, that's why we got, ended up getting that high deductible. And we shopped, and we went to a lot of other different companies, and because of the fact that that claim wasn't reported by the TPA, that's why we were rated so high. So, that's what happened.
Did you hear that, Greg?
No, I didn't. Sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Thank you for the explanation, Treasure Green.
Yep.
Yep.
Sorry.
I'll get to all the questions, so, thank you, your presentation, and you will be doing that for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last presentation is from DPS, this is Latoria Triplet.
Good evening, Mayor Proten, and House of Members. My name is Latoria Triplet, and I just have two things that I want to bring to your attention and the residents' attention, and then I'll be out of your way, this is gonna be real quick. So, I am the Superintendent of the Department of Public Service, I want to say that. So, street sweeping starts on Monday, April the 11th. So, this sign here, this sign, will be placed, will be posted on the main streets throughout the city. So, your street will be swept the day following your trash day. And an example is, if your trash day is on a Tuesday, the street sweeper will come down your street on Wednesday. So, we're asking that you please remove your trash cans from the street once they've been emptied, and also remove your, if there are any, if anybody has any of those basketball hoops or anything that may be sitting on the street, please move it out of the way on that, the day after your trash day, so that your street can be swept properly. Once your area has been swept, the sign will be removed, but these signs will only be placed in the, on the main streets. So, please, get the word out, tell your neighbors, tell your family members if they live in the city of Inglewood, tell your friends who maybe don't live in the city of Inglewood, but have family members and friends that live in the city of Inglewood, because we want to make sure that our streets are swept properly. We want to make sure that the job is done well, 'cause we want our city to look good. So, please make sure not to park on the streets, so move your cars. So, just be neighborly. If your neighbors are not taking their trash cans and moving them out the way, if you can move them up on the curb for them, please do, or knock on their door and ask them to move them out the way, because we just want to make sure that our streets are swept properly, okay? All right.
What's the date due on?
April the 11th, which is Monday. That's when they start. So, when they start Monday, they're doing Friday's route. So, this Friday, this, whoever's trash is on Friday, their street will be swept Monday. Okay? So, please, tell your neighbors, your friends, and your family members to move their trash cans, their basketball rims, or whatever else they might have sitting on the street, so that our streets can be swept properly. The next thing is compost started today, and it will continue until December the 16th. So, they'll be picking up compost every trash day. And that's it. Any questions?
I got a question for Miss... Go ahead, Ruthie. Okay, I hear you saying the streets are gonna be swept and things like that, but just on my part alone, I could speak, there's getting garbage cans and everything, things at home, more, we got three rims, a basketball rims, on Glenwood, there's full basketball rims. So, what if these things are not removed?
The street sweeper... If they're not removed, the street sweepers are not going to get out and move them. That's why I'm saying be neighborly. If you're friends with your neighbors, they're gonna go around it. If you're friends with your neighbors, or you have a good communication with your neighbors...
I have good neighbors sometimes. You don't have good neighbors sometimes, no.
Okay, that's when code enforcement is gonna get out. Ruthie, maybe you need to call the code enforcement and, or the mayor, and just tell them that, because I understand, we have the same problems all over, where people are leaving garbage out.
I gave her, I gave her the address of everything.
Okay, so we, you need to go back again, we need to go back again, and you can give the city clerk the information, so she can go back and speak to the mayor. But if they don't pick up their trash cans, they should be being taken in, because after a certain day, if your trash is on Monday, by Wednesday, you, the trash can should be back. And that's what we did talk about previous with the mayor. Current mayor is saying, we need more patrol out there from our code enforcements to have this done. So, if we're not getting it, like you came up here today, we just need to keep calling and keep coming back up here until we do get it. So, you get, so that's something that I will speak with the mayor on as well.
And let me bring that up, because she is, you know, Ms. Ruthie has brought this up multiple times, and I've brought this up to code enforcement multiple times, and it hasn't really much been addressed, but we did bring it up to the administration.
Okay, did you bring it, you bring it to the administration, but did you walk into the mayor's office and tell him, this is what we need done?
Me and her both have...
Okay, well, then, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to him, because I had the same...
I talked to code enforcement, I gave her the address of everything.
Right, right. Okay.
And the day is Monday, and it's been there with almost five, six months.
Okay, well, I will be talking to the mayor, because I have the same issues. All right, thank you, thank you so much. Mr. Bradford?
Thanks for taking my question. Just to review, if the 11th is on a Monday, and it is, my trash gets picked up on a Monday, the very next day, everybody should clear the streets because the street sweeper, street cleaner is coming by the next day.
Absolutely. If it's not raining, now, if it's a rain day, your street is gonna be the next day. So, you gotta keep that in mind. If it's raining that day, the street sweepers are not out sweeping on rain days. So, you gotta wait until it's not raining, then it will be the day after.
Okay, please, we have silence. Wait one second, we have to be recognized, and we have silence, so we can't hear them speaking. Now, are you finished with your...
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Council?
I'd like to ask a question, and, and, and it's a, um, under our code, okay? If you, if you have a certain time to put your trash out, which I think is six in the evening, and you got a certain time to have your trash can put back, okay? So, my question would be, how come the code office don't go down the streets when they see these out there, that people got garbage cans sitting out there, three in four days? They don't even move them?
That's not, that's not her, though. That's our code enforcement. That's something we need to take up with our code enforcement. She's just a superintendent for DPS.
I didn't say it was...
But I, but I understand it, but, no, no, I'm not trying to get over you, I'm not trying to speak over you, but that information should be relayed to...
Can I finish?
Yeah, you can finish.
Okay. What I'm saying is, if that's the code, code enforcement's job, then they need to get out there and do their job, okay? Because first of all, when you go down the street and you see a garbage can, we, I, like my garbage can, my, my people run on Thursdays. And you get up on Saturday and Sunday morning and you see garbage cans still sitting out there. Okay? And so what I'm saying is, you know, we got, we got laws, rules, and regulations that we go by. Why don't we just put them in force, in force? I know she has nothing to do with it. She's from DPS, but, but if we got, if we got all, and I, I understand we got a lot of code officers that should be going to work. Okay?
That's why I'm saying if you are neighborly, if, if your neigh, if you talk to your neighbors or maybe you know a family member that might know your neighbor, however you, we just want this word to get out, to have your cars off the street, have your trash cans put up on the curb or in the backyard, and then have those basketball rims off the street so that we can clean the streets properly.
I understand. I understand exactly what you're saying, but the thing about it is, we, we're going to learn by, we need to learn by demonstration. That's what I'm saying. People, people know what they don't supposed to do things, but they do it anyway. Okay? So, what, what I'm saying is, we need the enforcement, the code officers to get out there. We, we, we got a lot of them. How many code officers we got now?
Three or four.
You know, give them gas so they can ride around the neighborhood.
Thank, thank you. Thank you so much. Um, look, I mean, we got, we got to keep moving on. I'm going to take your questions, but do we have another question?
I did some, I just wanted to find out really quick. You said that, you know, I heard Jill say, you said if it rains, then it'll be the next day. So the question actually, if they got picked up on Thursday, if it's raining on Friday, when they come there, they'll, they're going to come out on Saturday, am I correct? They'll come out that Monday?
They're coming on Monday for?
No, no, I'm saying, okay, please.
They're, they're going to do two. They, they, they're going to catch up.
Okay, because I was wondering if it's raining that Friday because, uh, garbage been picked up on Thursday and you said it'll be that next day. So I was just wondering if it's raining that Friday.
They're going to do?
Have Monday.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Right.
Okay, I'm going to take these last two. Um, go ahead.
Mine is, if it's only parked on the main street, what about those that do not drive? That would be an excuse for people that, oh, I did not see that sign. I did not know that there were no parking in the street. And if we do not have code enforcers coming around, the street can't get swept. You're saying you're just putting it on the main street?
On the main street?
Yes. You have people that don't drive and like she said, sometimes you can't get along with your neighbors, your neighbors. But what are you on our property for? I don't care. Is there any kind of way that there can be, it can be mailed out with the date? And if your car is not moved, the code enforcer will come around and give you a ticket like they, the city of Inkster used to do. It will have the date and it will tell you, your car needs to be moved off the street. If it's not moved off the street, you will get a ticket.
Okay, I think that's a question that the mayor will have to answer, that question, because like I said, she's just on this end. It's council and the, and the ma, and the mayor should be making their policies. We make policy. I'm sorry, not the mayor. But it's up to council to get on the mayor for not doing what he's supposed to be doing with the code enforcement. We do get reports. You can see what each code enforcement is doing in the reports. We give monthly reports. When, when we get our monthly reports, it tells each individual, a code enforcement, what they are doing. But we have stretched that and that's something that we will talk to the mayor about, okay?
But that's still not what I was saying. If it's only on the main street, how is everybody in the city of Inkster going to know you have people that don't?
Well, it might, it would probably be publicized. We can put it on the website.
It will be.
You got people, once again, that don't know.
That's in the report.
Uh, internet and things like.
I think a lot of stuff will be posted. Uh, and some was posted at the grocery stores. We will talk to the mayor about that as well to find out, okay? All right. Okay, um, any questions up here? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no public hearings. Uh, consent agenda?
So move with corrections to the minutes.
To the minutes, okay. Do we have, do we have a support? For, I'm sorry, I'm in here.
Get anyone.
Support, okay. It's been learned for support. Any discussions?
Yes. Um, it was just something brief and if I overlooked anything, um, um, Clerk Chapman did email me asking me further corrections that I had spoke of. It was just, um, under presentation and discussion in the minutes. I think the name and the title should be changed to Superintendent White from AIA. Because it's, I think Mr. Wilder is a different employee that's a leader with AIA, but I don't believe he was the one that presented that night.
Right, it was Mr. White.
Yeah, but he's the superintendent. And then under public, um, comment, just the participants from the general public, their names were listed, but it wasn't any bullet points or notes about what they had may have, what they had announced. So I was just asking, uh, if one, we could either do that or two, just add that on there. There's something like, because like under council, there's a bullet point for whatever I might have spoke of, whatever the clerk made spoke of, that's all. And then I don't know if my colleagues have anything else to add, but I'm, I yield the floor.
Is there any other discussion on this honor?
Yeah, there is. Uh, where the clerk put under, uh, under the last consent agenda because there were issues with the last, uh, and it just says, um, approved with the corrections noted, but there were no corrections noted. So how are we supposed to know?
The, the minutes, the corrected minutes.
The minutes weren't correct the last time and you didn't put any in this time.
The corrected minutes go on the website.
So they don't go on the packet?
I don't bring them back into the.
They don't go on the packet. So if you want to see what was corrected. So all of this stuff, like the people's comments that there's nothing on, that's on the website?
No, because the only requirements for the minutes are any actions that took place.
Okay, well.
What the council voted on. That's the only requirement. Everything else is.
Well, I think it's going to be important for you to, for you to explain to us how you do this new way. Because this is not something we've done before. These are public records. So whatever happens in these meetings have to be in the record.
All the actions are noted in the record.
But not actually what happened underneath those things.
Any vote that this body takes.
So we're only putting in votes?
And that's the only requirement.
So like this, uh?
If you guys would like to have more.
Yeah, I think more.
Okay, well, let's just last do the council.
That's what I'm saying. Let, tell us what you do and don't do. And we can tell you what we are expecting. Because like I said, I go back to this to find out about things. And if it's not there, it's virtually impossible for me to, you know, get any type of consensus or anything because it's not part of the record.
I think that'd be part of that.
These things are foiable. They're court documents. I mean, all sorts of things like that. So if you're alleging something happened and it's not there, it's.
Every resolution is noted and that's the only requirement.
Okay, well, there's not, well, we need to talk about what is and isn't required. Because our past, and I'm not saying you're supposed to do what she did, but we were able to go back and find out things from the minutes and that's not occurring right there.
I can certainly move forward adding every comment. I don't advise it, but I can move forward in that direction. If it pleases this body.
Well, I think, I think accuracy is what would please this body.
So are we complete with the corrections of the minutes?
Uh, no, because there were other statements that were requested previously in the last one that didn't appear, or corrections that didn't appear in this one again, in the, um, comments, the council comments.
Your pleasure is noted. Is there anything else?
Is there, it was my understanding that we had to make these things public. Uh, the last time when you said, uh, when we were making corrections, that they had to be done in a public forum. So when you sent to Councilman Chisholm to send you, you know, whatever, you said you, you know, is this something we're going to be doing or if it has to be made public? Then him sending you the corrections via email is not the same thing.
Uh, it would be because it would be a matter of a question. If he was speaking of typos, simple errors, that's something that could be amended and brought to the body at this meeting. He did not make it clear what he wanted and that's why I communicated with him. There was nothing outside of this public body.
Well, what I'm attempting to find out is, are we supposed to do it publicly or are we supposed? Or is there criteria for it?
It's, it's no set criteria for that. I mean, you can pull the minutes at any time and make any correction you wanted. He communicated with me about the minutes. And he said it was something inconsistent. Maybe it's something that the agenda is amended all the time up until you, this body takes a vote. So the minutes could be amended and brought to this body before you take a vote on it.
So, excuse me one second. I'm, I'm trying to figure if I'm understanding this correctly. Uh, Councilwoman Wiley, if, if there's an error in, and it's something that's not being reported, and if we email her, you said, well, once we get the corrections back, she should say that this has been corrected and put on our next, agenda for the next meeting. Is that what she, so in last two weeks, the two weeks, our last meeting, if there was some errors that she would want to correct it. So once we email her the corrections that we see, she should bring that back to us today so it can be in this packet. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Okay, that's what you, okay. So therefore, if we have corrections, that's when we get our, uh, council package, should be on Wednesday, then we have enough time to go through them and then email them to the city clerk. And city clerk, then you can make the, because that's what we've been used to doing, so.
This is, this is what I'm talking about because the last time we did that, she said they had to be made publicly. I'm just trying to get clarification.
So that's, so is that what you're asking?
I'm trying to get clarification as to what we're supposed to do. Because if we bring it to the public, because they said this was supposed to be done in public, the last, the very first time we did it.
Okay.
And, uh, so I'm trying to find out if that's the way it is. Are we going to email her? If we email her, is it going to show up on the, uh, minutes or not?
Okay, so, so, okay, so this is what we're going to, this is what I'm suggesting. If there's, and I've said that a couple of council meetings. If you find an error in your, in any of it, the minutes or whatever, we have enough time where we can email the city clerk. She get the corrections back. Have them on our desk before, when we get to council meeting. And then we can say, look, the corrections, what's made line by line. Is that something that this body would like to see?
Yeah, you'd like to see what the corrections were, not as noted because.
Okay, well, that's what we do. That's what we're going to do. So do you understand that?
So if.
How I get it?
Yeah, so if a council, yeah, if a council person emails you and tells you that there are corrections, then we would like to see it on our desk that Monday before we, we come in for the council. Okay, okay, all right.
There's, I would also suggest a workshop where we talk about your expectations and.
Yeah, that's, that's coming, that's coming too.
And the rules of conduct in this meeting.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. All right. Are you done, uh, Councilwoman? All right. So we, uh, it was a motion on the floor for consent agenda. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 And those say nay, say nay? Okay, one roll call, roll, roll, uh, roll call for that.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Washington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wiley?
No.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
That's four ayes on.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, we on the new business.
So, 6A, uh, Smith Chapel has asked this body to consider a special event permit for the Easter Easter plane. And their new pastor, who offered a prayer, is here to talk about it. Would you like to come up and? And their new pastor's name is Reverend Twilby Turner, Tarver.
Tarver, that's right.
I did, I did have a group, okay.
Good evening. I am the newly appointed pastor of Smith Chapel since, uh, November, five months. I am honored to be working with the city of Inkster to make a positive difference in this community. We at Smith Chapel, our doors have been closed due to COVID for the past two years. So we're now having a grand reopening Palm Sunday, which is this Sunday coming up. And we're, uh, inviting everyone to just come out. But on the 16th is when we want to bless the community, the children with Easter baskets. We have almost 200 Easter baskets. We want to have, uh, Easter egg hunt. And then we want to also bless them with bikes. We have approximately 80 bikes that we want to give to the children just to let them know that we are back, our doors are open, and we want to be a blessing to them. So we are asking to use the property that's directly across the street from us to hold this event. Where we will have vendors, we will have, um, voters registration booths, we have health, uh, and educational booths where they get information, um, about different things that will help to educate them, um, in their education. So we're just seeking approval to use the property. And we're looking for it and thanking you already in advance for your decision.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Chairman, I move that we approve it?
Okay, support?
Support.
Any discussion?
It's welcome to Inkster.
Yeah, welcome to Inkster.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, say nay? Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, now we're upon the public, um, comments. And now the first one is Sergeant Weaver.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
I'm up here, I'm up here, uh, speaking on behalf of my colleague, Officer Summers, the community relations officer. Just got a few announcements real fast. Um, last week we had our, um, bake sale. And as always, I want to extend everlasting thanks to the, um, Inkster Commission on Aging and everybody who both helped make the baked goods and sell the baked goods and everyone who purchased baked goods. All of those baked goods will be go to help support the, um, Easter egg hunt that we have coming up in partnership with, uh, Inkster Housing, the union of the community, a lot of different organizations. I'm sure you'll hear about them from, um, other people involved. But we have the, um, Easter egg hunt on Saturday, the 16th. It is at, from 11 to 2 at the Inkster Rec Complex. At 12 o'clock, the Inkster Police Department will be putting on the helicopter drop. So we'll be doing a marshmallow drop from a helicopter above the rec center like we've done in previous years. We hope that everyone can make it out. And if you have any questions, you're welcome to reach out to myself or Officer Summers. Also, I'd like to mention that last week we had our first, really since the pandemic, Coffee with a Cop at Applewood Coney Island. It went really well. We had a very large turnout and had a great conversation with our citizens. And I invite anybody and everybody to please come to our next one, which is going to be held monthly. It's always going to be the last Wednesday of every month. The times may vary, but as of right now, it's 11 a.m. Okay?
Any questions?
Will you be in the helicopter this year?
Probably not. I think Summers would get, has earned that right this year. A little jealous, a little jealous.
I'm jealous too.
It was fun. We look forward to seeing everybody.
All right, thank you. And the next person is Yvonne Moore.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Protem and all the city council members and all our citizens of Inkster. So, um, you just heard Officer Lee will come up and speak about the Easter egg hunt that we'll be having on the 16th of April. Um, we did not know about Ms. Pastor Tarver until late, but, um, we're going to make sure, she's going to make sure that under the next event that she, we, we will all partner together. Um, since we're trying to bring different organizations together. So for the Easter egg hunt, um, as you heard her say that the pu, uh, the police will be sponsoring the helicopter. And, um, you can come and hang out the helicopter, um.
You can hang, hang out there, look out there. You can hang, hang out there, look out there.
Hang on out. Go to marshmallows. But I also wanted to say that besides our organizations, our Inxter organizations, which is quite a few, the Inxter Police, they have stepped up to do a marvelous job as far as helicopter, the marshmallows, prizes, juice, chips. Also, our Wayne County Sheriff, and he is called, he's going to participate also that Saturday. And he's bringing some of his men from the Sheriff's Department to also help with crowd control. He's bringing candy, he's bringing toys. So we're still in a lot in need of some donations as far as candy. They, we don't have to worry about the chips or the juice, but we do have to worry about candy still and also about the hot dogs. So we still don't know as far as if we're going to be able to get all of those. So we're just still asking donations for those. And we, hopefully, we can get all that done by the 12th of April, which is Tuesday, because we're trying to make sure that we get everything together so we can start putting the bags together for the kids for Saturday. So we are asking for those donations. We're asking for volunteers, if you would like to volunteer that Friday, when we put everything together, which will be at the rec center from 4:00 to 7:00. And then also that Saturday morning, if you would like to come out and volunteer, since we're going to start at 11:00, but we would like all volunteers to come out at 9:00. So we're looking to give, have a good time. We still don't know who we're going to use for the Easter bunny, so you know, Councilman Chisholm, all right.
Did you use me, did you use me up?
Of course, what not? So we ask you if you would like to, and also we'd like for your organizations to come out and set up a table for our youngsters. We're still in need for you to come out and do that. If there's someone who would like to come out, set up a table, bring some type of activities, you can either contact myself at 313-971-8775 or either Ms. Mabel Strowman at 313-971-8855. So we're looking to have a great time on Saturday. We're looking for all of you to come out. We're going to take pictures with the Easter bunny. Don't know, as I said, don't know who we're going to have as Easter bunny yet, but you know. Mr. Green over there laughing, but you know, we might have to have him too, Treacher Green. So we're just looking for, we hope that we see all of you guys. You know, we're looking forward to, as you say, to bring our city together a little bit more. And as I said, we're looking forward to next time working with you, Pastor Tarver, and everyone else in Inxter. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move in further, we do have our state rep, Jerel, Jerel Jones, like to come up.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Administration, it's good to be back home. Good to see everybody. First and foremost, just want to thank everyone for, for your good thoughts and prayers, all your support. I actually just, after we lost our wonderful brother, Councilman Chisholm, out in Lansing, we had a new staffer, and she was going to be here tonight. I wanted to make sure she came to meet you all, but she just had some puppies, not her, but her dog. Her dog had some puppies tonight, so she was unable to attend. I actually just came over from, Warren Evans, our county exec, just got the North Terminal at the Detroit County, Detroit City Airport, well, not Detroit City, the Wayne County Airport, named after him. So shout out to him for that. But I'm just happy to be here. As always, being a resource, I'm glad to be able to come back to the meetings. We're actually on spring break right now from Lansing. Just a couple of weeks ago, we passed, we got about $5 billion from the feds through the American Rescue Plan for underground infrastructure. So that money is going to be coming down in kind of like a grant style burden. So I'll be working with the city probably in the, in the coming weeks. After we get some of that stuff finalized, because I know some, some water replacement, lead service line replacements that need to take place out here. So that's pretty much it. Just happy to be back. I'm, I'm around. If there's any questions, comments, you all know how to find me. So looking forward to work with you all again. Good to see you beautiful faces. All right, thank you.
See you too, thank you. Okay, Paul Longway?
A month ago, I come up here and I addressed council, gave you all packets on dog attack and the problems I've been having with this neighbor of mine. I had not yet heard anything except for you from one text, Ms. Howard. I feel like a second-class citizen. I addressed you about how the police, the police were handling this, how the prosecutor, the city attorney was handling this. Still haven't heard nothing from you. Still waiting. Things need to be done. This woman needs to face charges. I'm getting tired of this. It's a waiting game, and I'm tired of waiting. The reason why I gave you all packets, so you know everything that's going on, I was being open and transparent. You all have my phone number, name's Paul Longway, it's in the reports, especially under the dog attack. Or animal, I'm sorry. I hope to hear from you, and this needs to get resolved. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I come in?
Yes, go ahead.
He can sit down, I don't need him to respond. I think Mr. Longway has serious concerns. His, his, his mother was attacked by a dog, a vicious dog. But his repeated appeal to the city to come forth and do something is not the city's position to do. Code enforcement, they cited the dog owner for not having a license or being loose or something to that effect, which was, which was appropriate at the time. They even went so far as to have the dog tested for being a vicious dog. What happened is his mother was on the property where the dog resided. His mother, according to the police reports, touched the door. The dog shot through the door protecting its property. The dog has been tested, not violent. Mr. Longway doesn't mention that he has also been cited at this property for stealing along or out of the same property. He's upset that he was charged with the misdemeanor. And then there have been phone calls and back and forth between these two neighbors. And unfortunately, these neighbors aren't getting along. It's not the city's job to get in and mediate a dispute between neighbors that can't get along. He has been instructed by my office that if he feels that he's been wronged by a neighbor, he should consult an attorney. The attorney consulted apparently does not want to file lawsuit on his behalf because of the damages involved. It is not the city's responsibility to take up a person's intent on behalf of this citizen. It's unfortunate what happened to his mother, but that's what happened. It's not the city's fault.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the last one?
I'm talking about her coming after me with a hammer, coming after my daughter with a hammer. Second, the attorney, this is the dog and my mom's saying.
Okay, Ms. Longway, okay, you're out of order, out of order, okay. Pastor Overman?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Very thankful to be here. Have a few announcements. Of course, I won't have to announce April 16th because it's been done. But I want to make an announcement to the residents in the city of Inxter. We have quite a few scholarships from Inxter Ministerial Alliance, the Western Wayne County NAACP, Equipped, as well as Booker Dozier. It is on Operation Refuge's website where you can see that information, hate for the money to go back. I know someone knows a senior that can use a few thousand dollars. Also, Wayne Metro has funding for ambassadors that doing any kind of work with your organizations, if you're doing something monthly and you're having four meetings and you share information revolving around COVID vaccinations, there is $1,000 available to those organizations. The Inxter Dems will have our meeting tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. It will be on Zoom. You can get ahold of me for that information. Now for Operation Refuge's information, we still have lots of food, lots of salmon, fresh vegetables, frozen vegetables, halal chicken tenders, organic veggies, all kind of things on Wednesdays. We do need more volunteers. Last week, we serviced over 300 families. So there was cars from the pantry to almost middle belt. So we could use some assistance in that. On Wednesdays, we are also a site for HIV testing in partnership with Matrix Human Services, as well as COVID vaccinations and testing. If you are a high school senior, you can be paid now to be one of our partners through Michigan Works, the WEO program. So if you're 17, 18, 19, or 20 in college, you can be employed through Operation Refuge, working virtually, of course, $13 an hour, we're starting. So thank you so much.
Can you repeat the scholarships with?
Yes, we have several. It's Western Wayne County NAACP, Equipped, Dozier, Inxter Ministerial Alliance. So lots of funding available. It's on www-operationrefuge.org, as well as Facebook, our Camp Inspire page. I think I got all of the announcements. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, council, before council, city treasurer, do you have anything?
Yes, there was, I spoke with Richard Klein at the State Treasury today, as well as the State Attorney. They indicated that, you know, because our audit wasn't in, they automatically generated a letter speaking on our state's shared revenues. That letter was automatically generated to VJ, who was treasurer last year, because our audit wasn't in, it should have automatically sent it to the email of the treasurer from last year. So I never got it, but spoke with Eric, nothing that's happened. They haven't held any of our revenues, but they just have to send that letter out automatically to the audit consent.
So that was the audit for, for 2020, 20, in 2021?
2020.
Okay, so what, the audit was completed, so then nothing was ever sent?
The audit hasn't been completed.
For 2021, we have not had an audit complete? Okay.
So Eric there said, because there was so much information that needed to be completed, census data, open air data, grant information, a lot of stuff that just wasn't turned in on time. So the audit has gotten late, so the audit's been completed.
So what about this audit that we still trying, we still getting? Is this what you're talking about?
No, this is the same audit, yeah. We have a date for audit for, for the current year.
So, okay, so, okay, go, okay, that's your counting. I'm waiting for my public counting. Okay, all right, city clerk?
I have no comment.
Okay, now we're on the council communications. Okay, Councilman Shaw?
Yes, ma'am. I just got two things here. Popholes on Avondale and Harrison. Between Avondale, Harrison to Inxter Road, those, those popholes. And also police patrol on Glenwood and Magnolia. And also, I may mention, Madam Chair, is popholes on Glenwood and Magnolia on the corner.
Okay.
That's all I have to mention.
All right, thank you. Councilman Chisholm?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hold on, I'm writing down a note really quick. All righty. Let's see. Ms. Octavia Smith had reached out to me the other day in regards to April 6, 2022, being National Walk Day, and she wanted to get something like that started in Inxter. It's always the first Wednesday in April, and it encourages Americans of all ages to get out, stretch their legs, and get their hearts pumping. The American Heart Association sponsors this day to remind people about the health benefits of taking a walk. Wear your sneakers or take them with you to work, and at some point in the day, take a 30-minute walk. What she is proposing is that those who would like to participate, meet up with us Wednesday evening about 5:30 p.m. This is alternative and, you know, kind of last minute, but the efforts are there. And it looks like she's saying, let's meet at the Dollar Tree or by, let's say, the Dollar Tree. And walk down Michigan Avenue, going west towards Inxter Road, and then back, of course, using the sidewalks. And that's just in honor of National Walking Day and to promote good health in the city of Inxter. I will be joining her, and I welcome you all to join us as well as we get some exercise in, because Lord knows I need it.
What time you should say on April?
5:30 p.m., April 6, 2022. And that will be the Dollar Tree parking lot. And then with ordinance concerns, and I'm passing a message along, because this is something that I had tended to as well, because I did get some of those calls where persons had said they called different numbers within the city, and they weren't getting calls back or voicemails. And so over time, I had reached out to those different department heads to ask them like, hey, are you getting these voicemails from these residents? They said they're calling this number and leaving it, but something was going on. I don't know if the messages were going into purgatory or what. But what I had did to be safe, because I know ordinance got moved from, at one time, from City Hall to the Police Department, then they got moved from the Police Department back to City Hall. And now it's kind of sort of split. This recent time, I think it was March 18th, I had emailed Don Jones in the Building Department. This issue was in Councilman Shaw's area, so I CC'd him on the email. I emailed the mayor's assistant, Safe Alsonad, as well. And Mr. Safe, or Mr. Alsonad does welcome those correspondences to him in the event that something isn't getting done. So he can, I guess, forward it over to the property department and or the mayor's office. I just wanted to share that information. So he is here tonight, so you can get his information if you need. I'm not saying that's the resolution or anything, I'm just passing the message along. And also, I think that's it. I'm glad Mr. Green started the conversations about that audit letter, because I had concerns when I saw it as well. And I wasn't sure if it was authentic or not, and I was trying to, through the state offices, get, find out the authenticity of it. But I know Madam Chair, so she's going to address that later too. So other than that, I yield the floor.
Okay, before we move forward, I got one more. Claudius Britt? Okay.
How you doing?
He's on the public comments, but I pushed it up under, because I'm looking for this, I'm sorry. Come on over.
I lost my fiance last week. It took EMS techs 20 minutes to get to my house. I stay on John Daly in Sunnydale. Took him 20 minutes to get to me. I made two 911 calls, back to back. 45 minutes total, she lost oxygen on her brain. I just want to know, what can we do to get this quicker, this time? It hurts, she died in my arms. I'm gonna tell you, I never in my life asked one die in my arms. 45 minutes, with no oxygen on her brain. I'm just asking for the city of Inxter, what, what can I do? So this won't happen to the next person. I know it's a lot in our city.
Okay, so what I do is relay this message to the mayor and the fire chief. Find out what's, you know, find out from there what happened, and then?
When we stay in Inxter, I stay in Inxter. It's, it's.
Okay, you still, you have, you, you, did you, hold up, hold up, you're out of order. You do have your phone number, information on that paper you gave me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, somebody will be giving you a call.
Thank you so much.
And sorry for your office, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay, continue on with public, with the council's comments. Councilwoman Wiley?
Yeah, I would just like administration to advise what our legal representation status is right now. That's it.
On what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Our legal representation status, because I don't know if we're paying two, because we had Jim Allen last week, as well as David. So I'm just looking for some clarification again.
Okay. Excuse me, we need to, we need to have order back there, because if I can hear you, the people that's listening in can hear you through our audio system, please. Thank you. Okay, okay. Councilwoman Washington?
Yes, I have a few things. So I also like to address, we did bring up Ms. Ruthie Willem, she brought up Glenwood Street. I would like to bring that up again. Just sent the email, and I did have meet, and also Williams did have a meeting with the mayor in regard to this garbage issue. So we'll be able to try to address this again, so they can actually be able to receive the services and they don't miss out on the street sweeping because they have garbage on the, on the street or rotten issues that they're having. Also, Octavia Smith would also like for me to extend the invite. Inxter Chamber Network Event is this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. It's at BioMet Plasma Center. The number for you to call is 313-300-1057. And also, I would like to also report a couple of popholes on the first block of Grandview. There's a massive amount of There's a massive amount of, it's a massive amount of potholes on Grandview. And then my last report, I would like to share this information about the amnesty program through the Inkster District Court for warrant and misdemeanor traffic. It's April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two through May the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's walk in, you will walk out. If you have any existing payment plans, you may be eligible. Warrants will be dismissed and given a new court date. And warrant penalties and late fees will be waived if the case is paid in full. So you must appear in person at the twenty-second District Court Monday through Friday from eight thirty to four thirty. And that address is two six two seven nine Michigan Avenue, Eastern Michigan, four eight one four one, for those who don't know what the address is. And that would be all for my presentation.
No problem, thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
I just had one that I want to bring up. I had talked with the director of business about Spring Hill Street. Okay? And I know a lot of people have been bringing up different areas where they have potholes. I just, I have been asking for them to go down Spring Hill. Okay, and start dealing with all the big, large potholes down Spring Hill. Quite a long time that they had all the numbers. They just need to be filled in, okay? So I'm hoping that this assistant take back the message. Okay? I know you went in other areas and they've been filling in the potholes, but yet this has been one, for quite a long time I've been asked to get that done. So I would appreciate it, okay? If we get someone over there to fill in the pothole with Spring Hill between Annapolis and Lees, and, uh, Handle. Okay? I did it already. And that's it. I did all that. He asked me to bring up an issue about the, about the recycling. I already did that.
Tori took the information, and she's gonna get, she's gonna look into it and get back with us on that, okay? He did that orientation, he did that.
Right, recycling, they down.
Okay, excuse me, are you done?
I'm good.
Okay, okay. I would like to talk before, I would like to talk about the audit that, the letter that we did get today, and you explained that. But I have a letter here, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, to the state of Michigan from VJ. So is this what they're talking about that they didn't get? Because it's a questionnaire, and it answers to this. And I had, and it was an email, so.
I have to see it.
Okay, so this was two thousand and twenty-one. So I'm not, I'm gotta think about this because there's too much going on. Do we have audit books from last year? Anybody? I'm, my brain is.
Have to go over the list.
Okay. What's the status as of today?
The auditors, what we're done, the auditors are gonna be complete in May.
Okay, so how can we move forward with anything? We can't even talk about the budget because it's, it would be unofficial. I mean.
On the budget, yes, we can, because we're tough. We're in twenty-one, twenty-two right now. That audit is twenty twenty-one.
Right, but that audit also tells us where our budget really is.
For twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. So if we don't have a correct figure, because we.
That audit, no, the audit for twenty-one, twenty-two would be next year's audit.
Okay, we, okay, so we still need the audit because at the end of the sheet, at the end of the audit books, it tells us our weakness and our strengths. And it also tells us where our debt is. We don't know that. We don't know that as of today. That's why we have been inquiring about what's going on with our audit books. So if we're gonna do this in May, where is our budget? I mean, is our budget gonna be on time because according to the charter?
Yeah, but again, the budget for next year is gonna be the budget based off twenty-one, twenty-two, which is the year we're in now. An audit that's incomplete is twenty twenty-one, which has already been done.
Okay, but if the audit has been completed, we don't have.
No, the audit happened. The year has been done. Twenty twenty-one is over. Our budget that we're gonna be constructing for twenty-two, twenty-three is based on twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, but if we have any downfall or any shortages from twenty twenty-one, twenty, 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 twenty-one, that's gonna roll over to twenty twenty-two. We still don't know that. And there will be some downfalls, but I'm not gonna take you there right now. I will email you. That's all I have. Motions for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good night.